Almost quarter of eight as we came out of executive session. And if you'd all please rise for the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to a republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
If you'd all please remain standing, and if we can have a moment of silence for the Goria family. We have some additional agenda items, I believe.
Okay, I'll move to add to the agenda, making it new item two I.
C one, I think is what you're looking for.
Or?
I have two C one, let's do that.
Okay, this would go more with the, okay, with the excavator.
With Irene.
Okay, make this two C one, contingency expenditure in the amount of $5,000 for computers. I'll move to add that to the agenda as item two C one.
Star computers.
Can you do both, we make same motion for both?
And add, and add the sign call.
Oh, I'm sorry, I thought you did the sign call.
I thought you did that first, I'm sorry.
No, I'm sorry, I'll do that first.
Is the sign call we want to add in?
I'll move to add, I, sorry, I, I took it like this.
Let's start over.
Okay, let's start over again. Move to add, item two C one, sign call, special town meeting, and item two D one, appointment, commission on aging John Donnelly III to the April 6, 2016 agenda.
Second.
And it's been seconded, did you want to add the star computers in there too? Because you kind of rescinded your motion, so you're also adding star computers into our agenda, won't we just add that?
Okay.
Won't we add that up top, because we have the police here to discuss that. So, do you have anything else in the agenda, Mike?
There are three things, well, three told.
Oh, yeah, yeah, okay. So, two, why don't we make this two F one?
Okay, and add to the agenda for under new business, two F one, contingency expenditure in the amount of $5,000 for star computers.
Okay, so I have a motion, it's been amended.
That doesn't have anything to do with G, special appropriation for star computer?
It's, um.
It's a separate issue.
It's a separate issue, thank you. Okay, so can you, is there a second?
I seconded.
Yeah, so the motion's been amended and seconded as well, so we have a legitimate motion here, any comments? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, any abstained? Delegations, there's a few folks here in the public who wish to speak? Okay, this will be the time. We do the name and the addresses, all the other commissions do in town.
Jennifer Murray, 7 Tabernacle Avenue. The first thing I'd like to ask is, I'm not sure whether the Board of Selectmen helps the other boards schedule their meetings, but repeatedly the Board of Finance and the Board of Education are meeting on the same nights. I'm a very interested party in what happens with both the Board of Finance and the Board of Education, and on two occasions now, I've had to miss the Board of Finance meeting to be able to go to the Board of Education meeting. I think that there should be some way that these meetings can be scheduled on separate evenings to allow people to attend all public meetings that they would like to go to. The second thing I would like to talk about is the group or committee that put forth the new schools plan, where nobody in town is aware of what the membership of that group was, other than Tim Hagan and Jeff Newton, and why those meetings were not publicized, and why minutes were not kept of those meetings. If a $44 million school project is going to be put forth out of these meetings, I think the public has a right to attend them and read the minutes of these meetings, so, and definitely to know who was on this committee, or group, or whatever it was. So, I would like to ask, as I asked at the Board of Education meeting on Monday, for the membership of this group to be released to the public, so that we know who the two members of the Board of Finance were on this group, and who the two members from the Board of Selectmen were, who were in this group that is putting forth the new schools plan. On the capital improvement project, there are some items that seem to me to be fairly extreme, $5 million for another park of athletic fields in our town, when the Board of Finance is cutting from the school budget, and we're being told that we can't go forward with a two-school plan, but we have $5 million in a budget for a park. Also moving the central office to Lily B. Haynes, instead of improving it with an ADA ramp and new windows, would save you $190,000 in the capital improvement plan. My biggest concern with the capital improvement plan, though, is that the Board of Education is saying that the plan to build two schools at one time was not feasible, because there had been no communication with the town, that the Board of Education was looking for a $60 million two-schools plan. Yet, the capital improvement plan from May 11 of 2015 clearly shows in the 2018-19 long-range plan, elementary school proposed construction of $60 million added to the bond. So, which is true? Did the Board of Ed keep this from the other boards of town, that they were going to be looking for this $58 million project? Or is that just another piece that's being put in town that is not, the residents aren't being told the truth? This plan is currently being marketed to residents as a two-school plan. In fact, we have a new family that just moved to town who I met, and they asked me about the schools plan. They said, "Oh, we're getting two schools for $34 million?" I said, "No, we're getting one school rebuilt for most likely $44 million, since our state government does not have very much money left, and there is no guarantee that we will receive the $10 million in funding." And that it absolutely does not include rebuilding Flanders School, and that the Board of Education will be asking for 45-plus million more dollars between 2022 and 2024. Now, there is talk that the state is going to be closing down this fund indefinitely, and if requests aren't in before June 30th, those requests will be indefinitely not accepted. So, it makes even less sense to not approach the state for the two-school plan now, because we very well may end up with only one school, and we will have one school that's been rebuilt, that parents aren't interested in, because it's a 500-student school. And then we'll have one school with larger class sizes than the new school has, and is in desperate need of reconstruction. It seems to me that it would be prudent to either go forth asking for the two-school plan, or to just put this on hold, wait for some things to come off bond. That will give you more time to really let the townspeople be informed of what's going on, because right now, none of us feel informed at all. We don't even know who put this plan forward. Once a new plan could be created, if you're looking at it long-term, you have plenty of options that you could do to get the town on board for this, because I don't think that this plan is going to pass referendum. But those are some longer ideas that I won't get into now. I don't think that Lily B. Haynes, combined with NCS, has enough room. You're going to be looking at requiring at least three lunch waves, many staggered recesses that are going to leave children maybe having recess at 9:00 AM, and then sitting in a classroom the rest of the day. With skyrocketing cases of ADHD, it's important that these children get to be outside throughout the day. And since the new plan eliminates three of the playgrounds, and is going to leave us with two tiny playgrounds, I'm not sure how you even get your kindergarteners to recess, if we're talking about a school with 84 kindergarteners and one playscape for them. But my largest concern is, of course, that in the end, the town told us that Lily B. Haynes had to be the property that was used for a school. It had to be, because it was in the minutes of the 1955 town meeting, that a portion of this land will be used for educational purposes. Well, if that is so important, that this one-sentence fragment is in a 1955 town meeting, then why is it not of more weighted importance, when part of the parcel that Niantic Center School sits upon was taken by eminent domain? And when it was taken by eminent domain, when somebody's property was appropriated by the government, a home was knocked down, and the explanation for our town doing this was for school purposes. The explanation by the attorney at the time, the town attorney, Robert W. Marion, Town Council, said, "The Board of Education has been advised by the School Building Committee of the need for this land. The town has the power to take it for school purposes." Well, you've taken it, it's being utilized for school purposes. That was the intent with taking that property through eminent domain. So, I fail to understand why buying a property, free and clear, with a fee simple title, and a town meeting says, "A portion of this land must be used for education," means that you can never repurpose the Lily B. Haynes property, but the minutes of a 1975 town meeting that clearly state that this property was taken by eminent domain for the purposes of a school, why you feel that you can reappropriate that property to something else? And if everything we're told is that everything comes up out of the blue, we didn't know about the 1955 town meeting, so our plan didn't work. We didn't know that you wanted $60 million for a school, so our plan didn't work. I mean, what more is going to come out that you don't know about? Well, maybe you didn't know about this, so maybe your new current plan does not work. At some point, we need to actually go back to a town that has transparency, that holds meetings, where concerned citizens can go to every meeting in the town, and where the boards are not all pointing their fingers at each other, saying, "Well, I didn't know they wanted that, I didn't know they wanted that, nobody knew about the town meeting, nobody knew about this." There are public documents that support that the Board of Selectmen knew the Board of Education wanted $60 million. Why, all of a sudden, was it too much? We all knew what that would do to the mill right from the beginning, it shouldn't have been supported as a plan. If you didn't think it could happen, then you could have started replanning things all the way back in 2015, instead of in 18 days, which many parents in this town are finding completely unacceptable. And you're kind of making a face, Mr. Nickerson, if it was more than 18 days, then I would like to know when those meetings were, who were involved in those meetings, and why there were not publicized agendas. So, if there were many meetings that happened to come up with this new plan, I have a right to know about them, as do the other residents of this town. Thank you.
Anyone else like to speak to public delegation? Okay. Approval of the minutes, meeting of public hearing, March 7, 2016.
Move to approve the minutes of the public hearing of March 7 of 2016, as submitted.
Second.
Seconded twice, any comments? Corrections, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, any abstained? Approval of minutes, regular meeting, March 7, 2016.
Move to approve the minutes of the regular meeting of March 7 of 2016.
Second.
The seconded, comments, corrections.
Yes. On page two, item two B, the transfer from the Parahouse account, Mr. Nickerson said that this to put past donations into the Parks and Rec account that they belong in. The meaning of that is not clear to me, I wonder if that needs to be rephrased, is that what you're commenting, Mr. Nickerson?
On page two.
Yes, under a new business, number two, down to two B.
This is being moved to help with the program structures as transitions occur, it seems that. You're at the special meeting.
No, she's in the regular.
The regular.
Well, this one, special meeting, yeah, March 7.
That this is, yeah, it doesn't make sense.
That this is meant, this is designed to allocate.
Doing this transfer to correct past donations that were put into, that's what we said, so to correct past donations.
You don't correct.
That were put into the Parks and Rec account, back to where they belong.
How about, to properly account for past donations?
Sure.
And put them into the Parks and Rec count, to which they belong.
Okay, could you, could you say that again, Ms. Jeezman?
Mr. Nickerson said this was to properly account for past donations, and to put them into the Parks and Rec count, to which they belong.
Does that make sense?
Hmm.
Yes. Did you get that, Brooke?
I'll second that motion.
Okay, and then, secondly, on page three, two D. Let me see, where is that, page three, two?
I'm sorry, what page was that?
Page three.
Page three, I had written down, but my numbers now don't match up. Yes, I see it, okay, underneath motion number seven, motion seven in parentheses, and there's two D, Mr. Nickson explained that they have a CIP committee, and the FY 16/17 items.
I think that's for the FY, that should be for, not and. Next one, they have a CIP committee for the fiscal years 16, 17 items.
Okay.
That should be the word for.
Well, yeah, probably explain that there is a CIP committee.
And? Explain they have a CIP committee, and the?
And the FY, for the FY 16, 17 items, is that what you're suggesting?
I don't, I don't know, because I, the meaning isn't clear to me.
It appeared like I was explaining that we have a CIP committee.
For items for the fiscal.
Yeah, for the upcoming items.
How about, they have CIP, that there is a CIP committee, and the, these are the FY 16, 17 items, which then?
I didn't present them, or did I?
Ms. Johnson explained the items.
Well, didn't we table that, because we didn't have the copy, the colored copy that would make it understandable?
But you did have them, we decided to table it, because we have the copies colored, so, I can change and to four. That created the FY 16, 17 items, that fully vetted the FY 16, 17 items.
Proposed.
They proposed. A CIP committee that proposed FY 16, 17 items.
Okay. Thank you. That's all I have.
Okay, I'll agree to the amendments in my motion.
I'll second the.
Corrections.
The corrections amendments to the previously, previous motion.
Jeezman with a second, are you good with that? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, any abstained? Okay, that's a consent calendar.
Move to approve the consent calendar, the amount of $6,752.57 for the meeting of April 6, 2016.
Second.
The motion has been seconded, comments, corrections, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, any abstained? Okay. We'll go in the order as we have laid out, so we're going to review the CIP first. Actually, with a couple department heads here, department heads here, could we consider moving this around a little bit, if I, unless it's opposition, I'd like to hear, well, let's just go to Sergeant Mike Maisick and his items, and that would be to talk about what we added in. Was the star computer addition his, Anna?
Yes.
And then we also have F and G. So, star computers, the additional star computers, two F one, would be the first thing we discuss tonight, and Sergeant Maisick, generally, we have you come on up to the podium. So, basically, there's a shortfall of monies in the police account, and this is part of the change of leadership we've had over there, losing our resident state trooper movement. We just basically, actually, this is from last year's budget cycle, we're, we're, we're still around, but the annual maintenance contract, which is, we only charge them $5,000 as part of the star computers umbrella contract to the town, they only get, they only have to pay $5,000 for it, it is not in their budget, nor is there money to borrow from another account. So, the money is needed to pay the overdue bill for our annual maintenance contract to star computers, for our car and desktop computer system, and unfortunately, this was not budgeted for nor is in this year's budget, and I'll be adding it in, just with the Board of Finance. Are there any questions for Sergeant Maisick? You get, you pay $5,000, you get a, you get a good share of the lot, of the star computer contract in hours, because it's an IT nightmare over there.
Absolutely.
It's an IT hotbed, you know, you have a lot of IT issues over there, because you have a lot of things being recorded in the cars, but also things that need to be preserved for evidence.
Correct.
And court cases, et cetera, et cetera, so it's, we put a lot of attention to IT in the police, we only charge you a department $5,000, and it, critical IT issues. Not that a computer going down at the clerk's office isn't, but is there any other questions or any comments?
So, this isn't, last time you guys were here, you talked about you had a problem with some of your cameras on the cars.
Correct, and I was going to address that also in the.
That's coming.
In the other item.
That's coming, okay.
Again, this was something that.
This was just for the servers to download the?
Correct, for them to come over, do IT repair work. The contract, we're just, we're on the hold for the $5,000, it just, it was not put into last year's budget, or this one going forward this year. This is something I have spoken with Ms. Johnson, too, to try to get that put into, say, the 17, 18 budget, so we're not back here asking for this again.
Okay.
So, in other words, the $5,000 is the police department's share of an overall budget for all the town agencies?
Correct.
And for some reason, their $5,000 was not included.
It was not budgeted properly.
In, in the overall.
And when we, when we approved the star computer contract in Joe's budget, and the public works in IT budget, you know, it's for 95%, but it's not 100% of the actual contract, because some of it comes out of, it's not the right percentage, but some of it comes from police, and they're expected to pay, and they need to.
So, this is basically allocating to the police department their share of what they would owe for the total star computer maintenance company.
It wasn't in their budget, they're running very tight on their budget, we, we, we'll discuss that when we get into some of the other items coming up on your agenda tonight and going forward. We took a big chunk out of their budget, we were looking for budget cuts last year, and frankly, we just, we can't borrow from anywhere but contingency, and that's what the contingency is for, for times like this. Is there a motion?
I'll move to approve the expenditure of $5,000 from account 01-01-120-200-500, contingency, to pay for the 2015-2016 police department share of the star computers contract, and forward to the Board of Finance for approval. This was agreed upon during the 2015-2016 budget process, however, not included in the police department budget.
Second.
Motion has been seconded, any further comment? And obviously, we're going to correct this in this coming year's budget, it's not in your budget now, as we've discovered.
Correct.
Because we've discovered this, and then we went forward, and we went, whoops. So, we're going to make that correction when I deliver that final budget to the Board of Finance a week from tonight, to correct it going forward. Frankly, you probably need more hours on a star computer, you do have some IT issues over there that need to get corrected, but we're going to start here. I'll call the motion, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, any abstained? Okay, we'll go to two F now, which is a special transfer in the amount of $50,000 This is big, this isn't normal, this is disappointing, this is a result of, again, we had a budget that was bitten into last year during the, during the budget process, and I suspect this time next year, we'll be doing this again, you know, dipping into the contingencies, especially in particular cases. We dipped down, we took the overtime budget and asked the police to try to live within a smaller amount. Their history had shown that that wasn't the case, that they had been running at a different level. We asked, and it didn't come through, and I will point to three resident state troopers working for the town the last 12 months, or even the last time, and we have a little bit of an inconsistency, now that we have a permanent resident state trooper in the house again, who can watch, be watchful over the, over the budget, and also Mike, Sergeant Maisick has also stepped up in assisting the administrative sergeant at this point, that we, we're going to have a good handle on it going forward, but we, we have a lot of contractual overtime expenditures that are in that budget, we have had issues, we had a busy summer, we had a lot of, call volume was significantly higher, there were cases where three-man minimum, although it's the law and it's the contract, wasn't at all possible, because of the activity in the town on a particular day. We also have to consider the costs of a production, like celebrating slime, like these road races, which typically would be outside overtime, but some of these, these road races are internal, some of the things we do are internal. I'll point to the, the Memorial Day Parade, as, as hometown as that is, and it's, you know, it's, it's what we do, it's our best, it's our best moment, one of our best, it's a small little parade with little leaguers and Cub Scouts, and, and the hometown band, we have to block off a state road to do it. And it takes us 10 policemen to do it, or women, to do it properly, to take all access points, all detour points, and of course, the crowd control within the parade. So, these little things that we don't add up, we need to add up, we need to budget for these things, and we need to consider them, because, because we find ourselves in this place. So, do you have anything to add to that, Mike?
I just, I just wanted to add, I mean, we, there is no frivolous spending of overtime, we do look for ways to cut, we do look for ways to at least appease it. The Memorial Day Parade used to be, every officer that was available, we would have them come in, we've knocked that down to 10 officers, utilize the explorers that we do have in town at free of cost, to help block off some of the roads, help with some of the easier traffic issues, say along Main Street, where there's access to and from businesses, where vehicles may try to come out into the parade. We do have mutual aid officers, 18 of them that come in, that saves us actually $16,601.76 for East Lime Day. That event is very popular, if you all go there, the numbers just keep growing and growing, so getting those outside officers in actually helps us save a little bit of money. So, we may send one officer out, say, to New London to help them with their fireworks, but there, you know, we do look for ways to, you know, help combat that overtime cost. Again, there are some contractual things that are in there, you know, that, that account also takes care of officers that are out on vacation, whether sick leave, a personal day, if an officer is injured, so that account basically covers all those areas.
Other question? So, you're asking for $50,000 to get us through the last three months of the fiscal year, is that correct? What's the, what's the balance now, as of like April 1st?
The balance right now is $5,000, I'll give you that in one second.
Show it out if you have it here.
I do have it. It's $5,529.63, that is the balance as of today at 11:45 AM.
So, that'll, okay, so that'll leave you with $55,000, you're saying your average in here has been between 57 and 53? So, you're confident that this is going to suffice, we're not going to go over?
We, with what we're looking at, the average. We, with what we're looking at, the average over the past last three months of the last three years has been, is pretty spot-on with what's on the agenda item. It's ranged from fifty-two thousand to sixty-one thousand. I think with that, you know, fifty-five thousand, and with us trying to control some of the, you know, some of the outside last-minute vacation days, things like that, I have spoken to officers, they are willing to help out. You know, they do have a vested interest in the town as well. They are looking to, you know, help the department out, and help, you know, these boards out, and make this. But this is, this has been, you know, a historic issue. You know, every year, I believe there's been an appropriation coming around this time of year to refund the overtime account. I just think it's never really been properly budgeted for. It seems that we historically spent about two-hundred-and-ninety-one thousand dollars on that line over the past three years. And that's the first thing that get, that gets cut, because it looks a little over-inflated. And that kind of where I wanted to bring the transparency a little bit, was take those contractual things out of there, so that line, again, doesn't look so large, because, you know, maybe somebody on the outside that doesn't read the minutes, they just see that, that larger two-hundred-and-ninety thousand that gets cut maybe to two-eighty, that these guys are just getting all this crazy overtime, when there's actually, you know, the areas that it does cover.
We're trending toward fifty-five or sixty thousand dollars. I am asking the police to step it up a little bit and find ways to do it, asking the officers to put in their vacations early, instead of at the last minute, where an overtime would have to be called in, et cetera, et cetera. We can all do our little part. If they have to come back for a five thousand dollar shot in the arm, I'd rather do that than give them the money here.
Yeah.
You know, if, if we're scrambling mid-June, and we're, we're going to be pulling from a couple different accounts, we, we're running a very, very efficient lean budget. So, this is going to happen. Any other comments to decide over here? Ms. Hardy? Do you have a motion on the table?
I'll move to approve a transfer in the amount of fifty thousand dollars from account zero-one dash zero-one dash one-twenty dash two-hundred dash five-hundred contingency to account zero-one dash two-five dash two-one-six dash one-hundred dash five-one-four. Police overtime, due to the overtime being greater than original budget, and forward to the Board of Finance for approval.
Second.
It's been seconded. Comments? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstain? Let's talk about the special appropriation of five hundred, five thousand eight-hundred eighty-eight Star Computer, Police Department. That is two G on tonight's agenda. The money is needed to pay for a new server. We've discovered the server at the police department is fried. We've had that happen here at the town hall. My guess is, in the next couple of years, we're going to be doing everything in the cloud, and, and with the addition of this fiber optic network, mag network that we've been installed, that we might be able to do that. But with police work, a lot of that stuff has to stay local, and there's a lot of security issues. So, this new server is going to, is, is proper. It's, the installation for a new server, for the arbitrator, in-car camera systems, right now, we're taking video in the cars, but it's not being transferred, so therefore not usable in the cars. The current server's outdated, and not working, and not repairable. Mike, you want to add from there?
This, it's a, basically a PC that we are operating off of now. It's a 2009 model. It's not...